Hey Sergio.
Hello Alex.
Hi, thanks for taking the time to speak to me. I apologize for being a little bit late. Um alright. Um I'll try to be as fast as possible, I promise. I just just to give you some idea on what I'm doing is, I have a little hobby and that hobby is having a channel where uh people can come on and share their area of expertise, um their fields, their experiences, uh just for younger generations to sort of listen to uh at some point. Um so, having said that, do you wanna take a minute and introduce yourself, who you are, what you do?
Uh my name is Serge, in Ukrainian uh also it's known, my name is Sergio. You can understand Sergio because no one can even spell his name right, S- Serge or it's it's Serge. But uh can you repeat?
Serge.
Yes, yes, that's it.
Alright.
Uh I'm thirty-two years old, I'm for ten years working in local governance. And I started just from university and that was position of accountant in a local municipality and five years, al- almost five years, I am secretary of local uh local government. Local council, yes, councillor also.
Okay. Alright, that's very, very interesting. Um I have many, many questions for you about that. Um but let me ask with some of the basic things, what is happening in Ukraine today with the with the war and everything?
Um these days are the hardest for twelve years. This this month, the end of June, because um Russia uh since that Trump can't do anything to them.
Uh-huh.
And uh last week, USA stopped help to Ukraine.
Hmm.
And uh yesterday Trump proclaimed that USA will will again give Ukraine weapons and another aid, but that post was enough for for Russia to to do the hardest strikes ever. We had the the most quantity of rockets, miss missiles and Shahed drones, especially especially uh in Kyiv, the capital. Uh no not, there was not situation before, so hard for for Kyiv. And to the west of Ukraine, I live and work in the west of Ukraine and it's now not the safe place too.
Okay, um uh it working in local government, right? And being a Ukrainian citizen. Um and I know this topic could be a little bit hard, what is the root cause of this war? Why why did this war happen? And how do you think it will end?
Uh the the main root is our history, there was one thousand years ago, only one state in this territory, it was Kyiv, Ru- Rus. Kyiv-Rus, the capital in Kyiv. And three, four hundred years ago, uh began the history of Russia, Moscow via. If if Russians will recognize truly history, they will understand that we Ukrainians are true Russians, because Kyiv-Rus was the our our country, in our land, and they are from east, from north. They for they are not Russians and Europeans in fact.
Okay, okay. I I've heard the same argument, but from the Russian side, so I've heard the Russian side argue that all of this was Russia. Uh so they are like our smaller brothers. Um.
Can you please confirm for me, uh are you are you from Greece?
Yes.
Uh I hear that uh the name of that old state Rus in Greek language is uh Ra- Russia or how it to say?
Yes, Russia, Russia.
Russia, yes, and it is the name of uh modern Russia.
Uh-huh.
But there was not Russia one thousand years ago.
Okay, okay, fair enough. I'm just here for the facts, so I'm not disagreeing with you there. How do you think this war will finish?
No one knows, but we hope for Ukrainian victory.
Do you think it's possible?
Uh it is possible, but it it can be different kinds of victory. Even uh even if Ukraine keep these territories for today and it has capital, it has uh it has government, it has sovereignty of more more parts of Ukraine. It is victory to stand against Russia, because Russian army uh everyone in the world is afraid of Russian army.
Well, well, the Soviet Union army was a very strong army, so the Soviet uh army was in fact a very strong army. I understand that part of the Soviet army was also Ukrainian. Um so there are a lot of statements, for example, that the the Red Army that marched in Berlin had a lot of Ukrainians uh inside, so it's 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 a very complicated sort of history. So I just wanted to hear a little bit of your perspective on on that.
The roots of the war, excuse me, the roots of the war in our common history.
Hmm. Go on, say a little bit more about that?
Uh there can be only one state in modern world, Ukraine or Russia.
Uh-huh.
Not not in the same time to these two countries, it's impossible.
What about when when Trump first came out and he was discussing the possibility of a partition state? So let Russia keep the land that it took, uh and then Ukraine operate separately as a different country? Wouldn't that be a solution that would be, I'm not gonna say acceptable, but wouldn't that be a solution to the problem?
It can be solution only for ceasefire, but not for the end of the war. Ukraine and Ukraine and Ukrainians and especially Ukrainian soldiers, Ukrainian army will never recognize the the loss of our territories, even Cr- even Crimea. And for ceasefire, we can talk about territories, but but never we will recognize it.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Let me change a little bit the topic then. Um local government, how has the current situation affected local government?
Oh, it is very hard, because we don't have enough finance resources. Our our taxes not enough for for spends and we military spends are not for local government. It's always for state, but every local community in Ukraine spent money for their soldiers. For, yes, every municipality and council has a program to to help Ukrainian army to to build something or to or to give gas or
Some form of provide?
To buy drones, different.
Okay.
This is uh is it is difficult because we don't have development now. We don't we can't, we can't think about any development projects. Uh but when development project needs part from local budget. Little part, ten persons or more or less, but local finance and we don't have enough for it, even for development.
It's it's very interesting, why? Because you hear a lot of discussions um on public governance or public administration that talks about things like garbage, water, smart cities, et cetera, et cetera. And their problem is also funding, not having funding. And then you hear a country that is in the middle of the war and you're not talking about smart cities, uh water treatments, garbage collection, et cetera, et cetera. You're talking about fundamental funding to keep the war situation going. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, one of the main arguments that was mentioned by the Republican Party in the USA was um that there have been billions that have gone to Ukraine and ha- no one knows where. Um is this a problem of funds? Is this a problem of management? Is this something that you have seen from your experience?
It's the 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 first reason of it is is great ego of Trump. It's not, it's not true about that three hundred millions, billions, millions. It's that's not true. Uh European Union gave one hundred billions and and USA a little bit more, but no not three hundred billions and um I to say true, I don't support for one for one hundred percent our government, because because I didn't vote for our present current president. I I know that this president is not for this situation, is not to win the war, unfortunately. But I recognize him, I respect him as a president, but not as a man.
Fair enough. Do you think now is a good time for Ukraine to have elections? It's a hard question, huh?
Very hard, very hard question, especially for me. I understand that Ukraine needs, very needs elections, but it is in it is impossible. How how we can organize elections when drones and missiles can attack any object in Ukraine? And uh for few months ago, last year, we had about one hundred missiles for night or drones. This this two weeks, about five hundred.
So it's not possible for you to have, for example, elections?
It is not possible. Yeah and our people will not recognize if we will vote by phone or some with some technologies, it will not have a believe.
Okay, I see, I see. So let me ask you something else. If the war finishes tomorrow, for example, what is the first five things that public communities need, some municipalities? What would be the first five things you need? Not as a country, but you in your municipality, what do you need?
Uh we need to think first of all of our our people, our veterans, our fa- family of of our killed soldiers, because it is the 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 main task and also development projects. We we need we need to to find money for for development. This two points, the main. I don't know what what else to say.
That's very interesting. Um where do you think the money would come from? Would they come in the form of loans, for example, from the European Union?
It can, yes, it can be loans, it's it's not, I I don't hope for only help. It can, it can be loans in even for local councils.
Because the recipe of the European Union has been traditionally to come loan you and then utilize it. On the other side of the coin, you could do a lot of public-private agreements between local governments and private individuals, where they could come and, for example, focus on construction in, let's say, your municipality. Uh that being said, a lot of the construction companies are Russian, so I don't know to what extent that might cause a problem. Uh but I suppose you could try some construction companies in the in Dubai, in the United Arab Emirates, or in the USA. It just seems to me that relationship wise, it would make more sense for you, for Ukraine to sort of get into a public-private partnership with Russia, for example.
Yes, this is the main method to to attract funds, I think.
Okay, okay. Do you have any plans of 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 doing that? Um are you in the process of formulating plans or is it something that you understand needs to happen, but you're waiting for the war to finish?
We think of we think of it, but and our community is very small, sixteen thousand people. And it is a most safe place in the west of Ukraine, in mountains. The rockets and drones fly to about one hundred kilometers from us. And we think first of all of our people, which are in the front line now.
Okay, okay.
And what's the hardest for 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 me, for us here is uh people who are dying in the war, because from two thousand fourteen till two thousand two thousand twenty-two, we had only one man killed by Russia in the war, only one. And now we have forty-three, two for this week, two of them this this week. It is uh it is very, very sad.
What what has changed? Has the Ukrainian army changed? Has the Russian army changed? Have the weapons changed? What has changed?
Full full-scale invasion.
Full scale, huh?
Yes.
The reason I ask is because there's a lot of videos out there where you see, for example, North Korean soldiers um that are fighting. Um so I'm I'm just asking, do you think it's because it's a full-scale invasion or has it become more hateful than what it was in the beginning? So in the beginning, it was more of a strategic war and now it's more of a full-on war of hate on both sides?
I don't think that it is hate. Uh I think Russia is going to to made to make a life in Ukraine impossible. It's a clear terrorism.
Okay. Okay, go on, tell me more, tell me more.
It's it is very hard to speak about it, it is, I I don't know, I I have no words. It's so it's so hard for me, because uh I know that Ukrainian government can uh could prevent the full-scale invasion. There was Minsk agreement. And that that agreement was not perfect, but with with that agreement, there was no full-scale invasion and
Yes, I I agree with you. Um the Minsk agreement was not a perfect agreement, but there was, it was semi-peace. And I think the problem with that was the United Kingdom and Europe, not not Ukraine, nor Russia. Uh so I think it was mostly the European partners that caused the problem into it. And I'm taking full responsibility of what I'm saying, right? So uh I I'm saying it the way I feel it, the way most citizens in Europe feel it, that this agreement was an agreement that was pushed to be violated by the Europeans themselves. And my question to you is, why?
To have time to to trade.
Simple as that.
Excuse me?
It's as simple as that, more time to trade.
Yes, this, everything is in money.
Yes, but leadership, and I'm sure you see this in local government as well, leadership needs long-term strategy, right? So you trade for a short period of time for more money, okay? But then what? Like Ukraine has found itself in a situation now where there is no possible solution in the horizon.
Yes, I I don't see it. I don't, I don't know uh what will be. I ho- I hope uh to the victory, but it is, I don't know how it can be.
Interesting, interesting.
Interesting that, I I have no words.
Talk, can you talk to me a little bit about your ideology? What, where do you stand politically? Um how do you see it? Uh do you see it as a socialist? Do you see it as a patriot? How do you see it?
Um my ideology is right and liberal.
Okay.
Yes.
So capitalist, but with a little bit of patriotism, so neoliberal basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you're seeing a situation where you can't have economic freedom, you can't have actual freedom and all the 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 funds that are being received from municipal tax, for example, are being moved for one purpose alone, and that is the purpose of war. Um does this bother you? Uh how do you, what do you plan on doing? Do you have any plan on making a change or impacting it in some way?
Every few months, we have any new reasons to for hope of the end of this war.
Hmm.
Half a year ago, that was Trump elections. And and before we had hope for for planes F sixteen, for for some for something else. But nothing helps.
I see, I see.
And our government, from the first day of full-scale invasion, told us that the war will be only two weeks. Is that it's not as serious as it is. And it's very bad for our minds, we don't know to whom to believe.
That's that's a very bad situation.
That that's why we don't have plan, uh long-term plans. We we think about today or or this year only. And we can, we can't know what will be, will be next year. Uh at the end of this month, there in Ukraine must have, must begin election company for local communities.
Uh-huh.
But it is impossible to start. And it is, this year is the end of of my term. I I serve in the council for almost for five years, it will be five years in December. But now we know that we will continue serving till the worth, war ends or till or till next election. But elections is impossible because of safety problems.
That's a hard situation you're in. Let me ask you something. Do you think the solution could come through diplomacy? And if so, um do you think some, if not the European Union, do you think some countries in the Middle East or the USA could get involved to sit in a diplomatic table and come up with a new Minsk agreement? And also, do you think Russia's side at the current moment wants a new Minsk agreement?
I don't know, uh diplomacy will help, because it it's time not for democracy, uh the diplomacy, it is as I told you few moments ago, there can be only Russia or Ukraine. If the democratic world help Ukraine to defeat Russia, it will be peace in in Europe. If not, Russia will continue to Baltic countries or Finland or Poland. That's why I I I think that the recipe of the of the victory of Ukraine is to help, is for civilized world to help us, to give us enough weapons for for defeat in Russia, or only like this. Or or back Ukrainian nuclear power.
You think nuclear is a solution, nuclear war?
Nuclear war not the solution, but Ukraine had nuclear uh nuclear missiles and uh we we gave it to Russia and to USA in nineteen ninety-four. If if USA or Great Britain could back Ukrainian that nuclear power, uh I think Russia will talk with Ukraine like India and Pakistan.
Ah, I see, I see. Ah, that's actually a pretty smart solution. It could be a pretty smart solution. It could be a solution, not a, it could be, it could be a solution. So very interesting perspective. Okay, well look, we're running a little bit on time. I know I I know this was meant for a short period of time. Um so my next question to you is to the people that are listening, Europeans, Americans, Russians, Ukrainians that are not in Ukraine and are abroad. What is your message to these people?
I would like to ask about help for Ukraine to win. It's not about money, it's it's about your safety for future, for future of for our common future in Europe and civilized world. If the world help Ukraine now, it will be peace. If no, it will be chaos in in the whole world. Because maybe Russian-Ukrainian war is a part of Third World War.
Uh.
Uh it's not, it is time to stop it. And we and the world can stop it in Ukraine. Let's let's help Ukraine to win.
Interesting. I'll I'll leave that message as a message um at the end for us to have. But because of that message, I've heard from patriots in, for example, France or Germany say the the exact opposite, and I'm sorry if I'm gonna offend you with this, but they say that, you know what? Ukraine is not worth a European war. And what you're saying is that Ukraine is the beginning of a European war?
Yes.
So you think that, for example, you perceive this as Russian aggression and you think that this aggression is not gonna stop with Ukraine, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Why why Russia build the uh new bases in Arctic, near Fin- near Finland? Why?
I don't, I I don't specialize in 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 that region. I'm more of a Middle East policy kind of guy. But I understand the argument that you're making and this is an answer to the arguments that I've heard the other side making, which is a pretty good response. Um so I appreciate you taking the time to talk to me, Serge. Uh let's finish off with that message one more time. So what is your message to the world?
I would like to ask to help Ukraine win, because it's about our peaceful future, common future in prosper Europe. Uh we can, we can defeat Russia, but please help us with with weapons. With with drones, with with technologies, and it and the world will, war war will stop here.
All right, okay, cool you. Um Sergei, it was it was great speaking to you. Thank you for taking the time to speak to me. Uh I appreciate this. I I wish you wholeheartedly all the best, and I wish that you manage to see peace at your time. And hopefully, since we're both members of the young elected um team, that I'll see you in Brussels someday soon.
Yes, it's ni- nice to me, nice to see you and hope to see you in Brussels. Uh you are not organizers, but participant too, yes?
Yes, 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 I'm participating. I'm not gonna go this time, but maybe next time.
And what next offline um meeting for members of this program? Will be in Brussels, do you know?
I think it's gonna be November.
Uh Oc- October, October.
October, November, somewhere there, yes.
Not in this month or August?
There's one now, and I think the next one is in October, November. So the one now I can't go, but the next one probably. Okay, cool. Well, Sergei, thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your day. Have a fantastic evening and, you know, wholeheartedly, best of luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, all the best.
Thank you too.
Bye bye.
Bye.